Okay, so, welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of October 12, 7:00 PM. We have all members present. This meeting is being held remotely because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we do, I believe, have some minutes that to approve.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember when they were from now. Let me look.
And I was all prepared tonight not to forget public speak time and we don't have any money from the public yet, so.
I see. Was there that much of a space? I have minutes, it looks like 6:29 and 9:09, was there? Did we, is it possible with that spaced out?
We've met since September 9.
Yeah, I feel like. No, I mean, between June and September. Well, actually, basically, it was July to September. Did we not meet? We must have.
I don't think we met very much in July.
You're right, and we didn't, I don't think we met in August.
We didn't really have a whole lot to work on.
Yeah, we didn't have a, I think it's possible that we might have had like a meeting in July and then not met in August.
I could look back, I think for some reason, so I think I submitted you 6:29 and 9:09.
Okay, so let's approve those and if we find that we need to, that we're missing something, we can just go back.
Yeah, I think I was looking at those and thinking like, hmm, all right, hold on. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes submitted from 6:29, 2021, and 9:09, 2021.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, Counselor Zarek.
Yep.
Counselor Peak.
Hi.
And I vote yes, so those can be forwarded to the clerk.
Yeah, I'll double check. Me, I think something might have happened in July. I just don't remember.
Yeah, check it out, and if you find something, then we'll just go back and we'll take a look at those later and approve what we need to approve. And.
No conception of time anymore.
No. It's warping, it's warping. So, what we have on our agenda tonight is we have a couple things. We have the discussion with the EDIC, so I'll just give a quick update on that. I talked to Gwen, and she said the EDIC is meeting next week, and they want to take kind of what they got from our discussion, bring it back, and then come back to us once they've done that, because I told her that I was interested in potentially moving that forward, so. Let's see, what else do we have? I see that, oh, definitely don't want to cancel. All right, so I see Jeff is here. And, but before I go to you, Jeff, since we have one person coming in, I'll see if they want to do public speak. And, and then we'll get to you, and then Owen, I saw your revised language, so we can look at that maybe after we talk to Jeff. Awesome. Danielle, I have just extended public speak, so if you'd like to speak to something that is not currently on the agenda, now's your chance.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I'm just here to listen.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, Jeff.
Thanks. I did communicate really quickly by email with Salem, just said that I kind of dropped the ball in between your last meeting and this meeting, and I, there was a request to transmit materials, which I failed to do, and so I apologize, and then I, I just, there's a couple of things that popped up. There are hurdles in my, in all the other work that I'm doing, so that prevented me from getting the email off to you guys. I didn't get to post anything on the internet yet. So I, we can, however the committee wants to discuss this, but bump it out at least one more meeting, so I can get you guys the materials ahead of time, put the material, materials up, but nothing really seems to have changed significantly from the last meeting, which was, we were talking about mostly the highway business district and how that, you know, how that would potentially be part of this proposal going forward. So that seems to still be the discussion piece, but I owe the committee kind of the, I'll roughly say between 2008 and 2010 were the materials that, you know, that I was trying to gather that for a while, and I just couldn't get it all together in time. So that, you know, I think it would be worth it for the ordinance committee to meet one more time to talk through that. And then, you know, that might be the decision point, whether you kind of wished to send that packet out for the public hearings and for all the other public input process. So that is, it's definitely impossible. I cleared out some of the things that I was dealing with. But the one, there is one thing, I guess, I wanted to ask about because it's a process question, so in the interim, one of the owners of Cernac reached out about, it was beyond just the 40R, so we kind of encapsulated the 40R because there was, we were dealing with 40R around Pepin School and some tweaks, and then we had a landowner request to consider more parcels. Another Cernac owner asked about another change, which I wanted to get your opinion, I guess, because in my mind, we were talking about 40R, but I think the request is to add another piece into the highway business. So it would be like an additional zoning change that there's a parcel of land, if you're traveling out on North Hampton Street on the left side, so you're leaving town on the left side. I really apologize because I, I know the name of the street and I just can't think of it, it's the last left. There's a Singaporean house, the guy who had all the blow up balloons in his front yard. So that is owned under the Cernac family, and they want to, they were asking about adding that house and that parcel into the highway business, and currently it's not. And so I just wanted, I guess I wanted to get some input on navigating that. To me, it's a little bit different because we're taking, we would be going from a residential zone to a highway business zone. So it's like one bucket, whereas the 40R, we're kind of just talking about 40R, and we're still deciding whether we add those parcels into the 40R. We're not changing the underlying zoning, so any kind of feedback on that might help me. That's just one bit of the things I was trying to line up for the next meeting, but.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem, and I see that my colleagues have their hands up. I'll just quickly say that my personal feeling on that is that that would be a separate request to the council, just as it is, it's materially different. And, but, you know, like, I think as we're looking at 40R, makes perfect sense to be doing what we're doing. I think for that zone change, it makes sense to have it as a standalone, but I know that Tom had his hand up and then Owen, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just concur with you on that. I have no objection if a, it's, you know, it's an adjacent parcel, so like, I have no, no objection to that necessarily. But where I sort of, sort of the spirit of the council rules as I see them is that when it comes to, when we enter, you know, into a discussion in like, you know, in the committee that, like, how far can we really stray from that point while still being sort of true to what the measure is? So for this, the measure was expanding the 40R district, right? That's really what we put on the agenda, and then some other property owners approached us and said, actually, could you expand it even more? To me, that's totally in scope with what's on our agenda. If someone wanted to make a separate zoning change, like, again, I'm not saying this out of any sort of like opposition to that idea, but that does just seem like, you know, something, it seems simple enough that any counselor or, you know, some representative of the city could submit that to our packet if they felt that that was a good idea. I just think it has to, it has to be a different thing, I think. That's just my take.
Counselor Zarek.
Yeah, I agree with all that. I guess one question, I just wanted to pose to the, to the, the committee. In turn, so when, when the language is originally submitted, it was really looking at downtown business and specifically looking at overlay really in regard to, at least my impression, reuse of schools. And then this other, I think, worthy discussion came forward about highway business. And we shifted from talking about downtown business to highway business, and I feel I have gotten a little mired down on that, and I, one thing I would kind of put forward is, it seems to me that the original intention was this focus on downtown business. And so it's not to get the process to caught up with highway business, is there, are there any thoughts about kind of splitting, splitting the two discussions up so that we're, we can from a cleaner standpoint, move forward on downtown, and we continue to talk about highway business, or is there like a concerted investment in packaging this all together as it came up in committee?
So let's see, Tom, I saw you had your hand up, and then I'm happy to go to Jeff.
Sure, um, as the sponsor, I guess my one thing is, I don't feel, I feel like we're close on this. If I thought this was going to take six months, then yeah, totally. Since I think we're close, and since my experience, and I think this is all of our shared experiences, that the planning board doesn't have a ton of time and has a lot on their plates. My inclination right off the plate is to not come to them twice with 40R stuff within like a single fiscal year. But, like, I'm not, like, if I felt that somehow this, this highway business thing was going to drag, like, grind this whole thing to a close, there was a lot of stakeholders with very different ideas about how this should go down, and you know, it was turning into a whole thing, then yeah, I would absolutely just go and submit this as a separate agenda item so that we could move forward with the school-related suggestions that we had, but I'm just not sure we're there.
Yeah, and, and, and Jeff, I'll let you speak in one second. I just want to, I want to say I agree with you, Tom. I feel like these are close, this is, this is closely related enough that we can continue to have them together. And, you know, it's, we have to remember the process piece, that that would be a second joint public hearing with the planning board. It would be a second set of advertising, you know, and I know that those budgets are, are pretty tight. And so if we can, you know, go forward with these things, since they're so directly related, it just, it logistically, I think it makes more sense. We, go ahead, Jeff, what do you think?
I think, I mean, I tend to agree that with the 40R, there's, there was two parts initially, which was one, one map change, which was to pull it over to the Pepin Building. And that's kind of one thing that we were going to do, and then there's a whole, like, the whole 40R was up for minor changes. I mean, I, I'm describing it as minor, I mean, it's worth discussion, but like reducing parking requirements and making sure that if there was a development that was 100% affordable, that we could absorb that, and because right now we can't, and that's, it's just, it seems so counterintuitive, and then it came out of the planning effort, so that the downtown plan and the housing production plan, so I think those are general kind of things that we were looking at with the whole 40R. And I, I guess the way that, to try to delineate a little bit is that we, this is an overlay district, right? So we are talking about whether we add the overlay other places, but it's not a change to the underlying zoning, so property owners would always, could always choose to stay with the underlying zoning or go with the overlay, so it's always an option. Whereas the secondary thing I mentioned at the beginning was changing the underlying zoning, which I, I guess I concur that that would be a different amendment that would run a different course. The last thing I think to Counselor Zarek's point is, I think this is, we don't have any kind of perfect process. I think this is a good time for this committee to kind of be chewing on what do we want to bring forward as a community for the 40R? And then at the planning board and the ordinance joint public hearings, that's when, you know, we legally advertise it. You know, we, we talk about it more broadly. That's when, you know, when those two groups are meeting together, if, if there is like a big difference between the two, or we, or we're finding that it's going to take, because we, we, we did talk about the cannabis one, that took a long time. It was very good discussions all around, but it took a long time, and that, there would be a point where the schools will become important, probably in like December, January, like if we're still not clear in joint public hearings what we're doing in January, then yes, I think what Counselor Zarek said, then we might want to deviate and just push one forward. But I don't know that'll happen, but I think January would be the line in the sand that, you know, as we move forward with the schools, we might want to have some movement on that by, by January, but hopefully that was helpful. I don't know if that was helpful, but.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Zarek.
Yeah, and just to be clear, yeah, my, 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 my goal is to not hold up the process, so there's, you know, there's some applications, even if the overlay is the overlay, no matter where it is, there's kind of, when you apply it to a different zone, the there's, there's kind of like some really specific things that happen there, and that was my, my thing, is I just wanted to ask the committee if you felt that that might hold things up. If you don't, that's fine, I just wanted your opinion, that, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Peak.
While we're on this topic, I just kind of wanted to get my colleagues and Jeff's opinion on sort of a broader question. So right now, what this started with was, let's talk about expanding the overlay district by basically one parcel. And then we got some property owners that were like, we want to do smart growth. And hey, it actually turns out there was this full third district that was initially proposed, but there was a counselor who was opposed to it, and should we talk about doing that again, which I think is a very worthy conversation. We only have so many developable parcels left in the city, and if we can get those set up in a way that they can actually be used for developing the kind of, you know, property developments that we actually want to see, I think that's a really good thing that I think is very, very worth talking about. And so I guess then the question is, do we have a conversation beyond those proposed parcels? Like, do we have a conversation about kind of like, you know, like about parcels that have not yet been proposed, about like what sorts of areas sort of more broadly should be overlaid with the 40R zone, what, like, and, and how does that map? You know, because I could see this getting, like, what, let me, let me put this in a different direction. My I have this, this sort of reservation of the idea of us having to do this semi-regularly, right? Like, I feel like, I don't want to be like this to be like a parcel-by-parcel, development-by-development thing where every time that a developer comes in, or a property owner comes in, and they, they want to do something that's smart growth-related, we then have to go back and say, well, how about, does this parcel make sense? And if so, did the parcels connecting that parcel to the existing 40R make sense? On the other hand, I could see a broader conversation about the 40R and, and the overlay dragging out and becoming kind of a long thing. But is it a conversation worth having, in your opinions?
So, so I, I'll just chime in, and then Jeff is the expert on this, but, you know, I, I feel like there's a set of criteria as we look at 40R that we've already kind of established as, you know, qualifying parcels to be part of the overlay district, like walkability to town, central to, you know, transportation, that, those types of things. So, I mean, and I think we did identify, for example, one parcel that I feel like would be potentially eligible and, and appropriate, that's kind of on the fringe, which is the one on the Southampton border. But it is like, you know, it's, it's one short sidewalk section away from being able to walk directly into town. So I don't know if we, if we keep that criteria, how many more parcels there would be that would kind of match that, but I guess that's where I'd go over to Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, I think generally, Tom, I think the question is good no matter what, because as we go through the process, I think it'll keep coming up. I have, don't have a cohesive way to summarize this, but I think it's trying to, we're trying to acknowledge where there's interest and there's possibility and focusing on those. And, and I, I know that sometimes that will leave some other places out that maybe over there, like, there could be something in the future. Maybe we should consider that, but that will slow us down, and then we, we might never get anything done, and so it's, it's, I don't know if that's the best rationale for this, but we have this larger developable parcel that's listed for sale, and we kind of have this opportunity to, to try to look at it now. We have the schools, which we know are coming, and we, we have a need to address there. We have a really good 40R, the rest of it, so that's one part of it, is I, I think we want to be responsive, and we want to try to stay responsive, and as we, every parcel, every area that we add, we're going to be less responsive, so I just want to be kind of of that. The other thing that I will mention, which to me casts, it casts a longer view, right? So it would, it would say, maybe we talk about 40R now, and we might need to come back later for something else, but the Community Preservation Act, the CPA Committee, did fund Valley CDC to look at other sites that might be suitable for affordable housing. And they're going to do some granular analysis, they're going to look at the zoning, they're going to look at the proximity of the things, and they're going to look at the neighborhood, and you know, I just don't think that's fast. So they're going to be looking out where there should be some public discussion about the parcels that they uncover, and their, their goal is to take like 10 properties and narrow it down to four, that they might find to be suitable for affordable housing. But I don't know that we should not do this while we wait for that. So there's a little bit of the time to, to kind of act. If, if the committee, whether now or at the planning board level, like if that theme came up again, then, and there's consensus that maybe we should look at the whole town, then I would recommend that we break them apart. But the reality is that we kind of already looked at Route 10, it's very viable. And we've watched a property sit on the, on the mark, oh, it would sit vacant for 20 years, while, while hoping for something else to happen, so like, we could kind of figure it out in a smaller scale, and we, I just think the iteration of zoning changes may, it may never stop. Right? Salem can probably attest to that, like, we think we have the best zoning in the world, and lo and behold, there'll be something down the line that, you know, should be tweaked for whatever reason, and so to not do something because there might be more, like, it just might, it might not get us where we want to go in terms of like producing some housing units, so that's kind of a long-winded explanation. I would want to sharpen my pencil and come up with a quicker way to answer that.
Well, while you get yourself to a more concise answer, I'll let Tom go ahead.
Sure. No, I, I think that that's a persuasive and sound argument. I guess what I would suggest maybe is then let's focus on the parcels, this, this is my suggestion, is that we focus on the parcels before us, but also just maybe in this, like, process, keep an eye out because this is something we could come back to next year if, if we felt that it was appropriate to look at it, you know, in a more comprehensive way, you know, dealing with properties that we don't have like a ticking clock on. I think that there's some value in, in potentially just keeping that in the back of our heads is something we could do. But I, I do think that, I, I just don't see any, any good reason not to sort of move like semi-aggressively forward on this stuff now. Since, as Jeff pointed out, they're actually, the, the thing that differentiates these parcels from any number of other parcels that, I mean, like, maybe there's a, a house on them right now, but maybe that house will burn down, and suddenly it would be a great spot for some affordable housing or something, but like, you know, and you, and you'd love to have it set up for that, but the difference is that these ones actually have like a timeline, and so I think it's fine to be responsive to them now, but I would just say that as we go through these conversations, I'd encourage people to just kind of be thoughtful about, like, is there future stuff that we should come back to next year or even later in the winter, and yeah, that's, that's my thought.
That sounds fair. Counselor Zarek.
Well, that sounded incredibly ominous. Yeah, I mean, I think also by, by kind of like committing, by kind of like going through this process right now to, you know, if there's other places that come up in the more immediate future, we've kind of done a lot of the legwork, like, it's, this is a general, you know, intellectual or academic warm-up for if we wanted to go back and look at, you know, more 40R in the near future, so I think, I don't think it would be as, I don't think it would be as time-intensive or work-intensive. We would just kind of like compare it to what we potentially, whatever the outcome is of this, and say, okay, and match that up, so. But again, just to be clear, I just didn't want to hold up the process if we got bogged down somewhere, so everything else that people said makes sense.
Perfect.
And I wrote down, I'm sorry, I wrote down an extra note to like, look at the criteria, so I think Salem made a, made a good point, which is even the, that parcel going to Southampton near Big Y, like, it's not clear yet whether it qualifies for 40R, and, and that's the one kind of safeguard that we have, is that we, DHCD already approved these areas on, on Route 10 for as qualifying, and so I think that's important. That's kind of where we're, we're kind of lodging back to that, at least as a first step. The criteria, which I'll package up, that was one of the things on the list, I think that will help us identify like other, there's another parcel, like, it's come up before, but leaving East Hampton, going to North Hampton, I mean, going to Hoyoke, sorry, on Hoyoke Street at the corner of Hendrick Street, but I think I can tell you on, like, pretty quickly that, that, that's not going to qualify for 40R, because it's, it's just, it's not near goods and services at all, so like, we may need to look at those other properties for something else, or some other way to support them, if, if housing even makes sense there at all, so. Kind of just going back to the things where we feel some level of comfort knowing that, my, my comfort level is knowing that DHCD already approved it, gives us a really good place to kind of go back to and like reassess those as a step without, you know, without really setting us back like a whole year to, to do a lot of studying, and we can still do that, but maybe we run a parallel path for those other parcels.
Yeah, that sounds good. So I just want to, so Owen, I see your hand, I'll get you in a second. So I just want to, so when you come back to us next time, I, if I'm, I'm going to try to remember what we were looking for last time, which was maps. Kind of a re-affirmation of the criteria, and, and also a question about that parcel that's going towards Southampton, would we have to have DHCD look at that to get approved before we move forward? And then also, I know that I specifically requested design standard information, because I feel like that's one of the pieces of this that's, you know, can be pretty interesting, where we have a little bit of, of control and, and can be creative, so, and, and feel free to jump in, guys, if I, if I forgot anything, but. And then Owen, if, if, if I, if I didn't miss anything, then Owen, you're up.
Those are basically my questions, like, the design standard is, is definitely things I'm keenly interested in, because and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but once we, if someone opts in to one of these parcels, the part of the, the benefits of this is, is things, certain developments become by right instead of special permit, and so we really have to be thoughtful with the design standards. Is that, is that a correct statement, first of all?
Yes, it, the idea is that, you know, there's two things that are the incentives to produce housing, which is, yes, it goes to, it goes to site plan review, right? So the planning board would still look at where parking is and how entrances are formed, but it's not, it's not necessarily a matter of if the project is approved, so yeah, it's the reliability of that. So that's the by right, and then there's an additional, you know, incentive of the number of units, so the number of units that could be available, it's based on how the site works, so you know, you take the raw land, you build buildings and roads and parking, and then you're left with square footage, and that, that can be used for housing, so those are the two primary incentives. The city is incentivized because we are, we get a payment per unit that's built, and that's, that's the incentive that the city has to try to help find these properties that are suitable. The one other thing on the list would be like uses, I think Tom has talked about this, so the table of uses, you, we can look at this next time, which is drive-through restaurant, you know, where is that allowed? It's probably going to be allowed here because it's allowed today, but in the neighborhood area, it's not allowed, so we would look at the uses that are allowed in the highway business. That was something that was on the list, Salem, so.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding. I knew there was one other, but I couldn't remember what it is. All right, that sounds great. That sounds great, and, and so you, Jeff, if you think if we put, if we go out to our next meeting, you should have time, I'd like, I know, I know we're not in a super big rush on this, but, you know, I think if we can get it out of our committee and start the the process going, that, that would be great. So if we push it to our next meeting and we look at that stuff, maybe we can get to a point where we feel comfortable enough bringing it to the planning board.
Yeah, I can commit to that this time. I'm, I'm sorry that I didn't get it together for this meeting, but I, the next meeting will be important to hit, because then it sets up the next, you know, couple, like, next two months of process, so that's fine.
And, and gentlemen, do you want to look at maybe two, or do you want to go two weeks from now, or do you want to? Because I was, the 26th is, is, and Jeff, would that be enough time for you if we went to the 26th? Which is not next Tuesday, but the Tuesday after. Which is not next Tuesday, but the Tuesday after.
That might be a tough day for me.
And if we if we have to push it out like a a week or two, that's fine, too. I know the second is Election Day, right? Isn't that?
Yeah, I mean.
That might not be.
Ninth too long for, I mean.
The the ninth?
That's a while. I don't, I wanna, the twenty sixth is bad for me, so.
Sorry, I would say the ninth is fine, because what I can do is I can. I can really get into this and I can figure out the DHCD component, too. Because that might be a conversation with them about the Southampton parcel to find out like the the process for real. So I'm not, I I think the ninth would be great. It might professionally speaking, it would be fine.
Okay, that's that's on, and Owen, you think that works for you? How about you, Tom?
I can't imagine I have a problem that far out. Let me try.
All right, so and is and Jeff, is seven still better for you? I mean, it works good. It actually works for me, so.
Oh, you know what? I actually have a thing on the ninth. Sorry. Looking, how about? Tuesday, the sec- or does that that's the election? That's gonna be like crazy.
It might be a little crazy.
How about Wednesday, the twenty seventh?
Wednesday, the twenty seventh.
That should should work for me, like seven PM, you're thinking?
Yeah, that could work for me.
Okay.
Uh, that's not a city council night, right? So that's one of those off nights.
Would that be enough time for you to potentially get in touch with?
I will make that my priority to reach out to them a little bit, but yeah, that I can make that work. I mean, it's. You know, what I what I want to try to do is get some information up. On the website, because it it's not, we haven't been totally clear. I mean, we've been kind of clear. Yeah, let's do that. Let's do the twenty seventh, because I, because then it's gonna go, then we need a few weeks to get it advertised for the for the joint public hearing. Actually, let's look at that real quick, do if you don't mind. So then. If if we did that, the twenty seventh. Hypothetically. The planning board is gonna meet. Like on November sixteenth.
Okay, so I I could I could move it to the planning board on our November third meeting.
I think they need two weeks. It would need to be, I think it needs to be advertised for two weeks. I'll double check that, but. That'd be fine. It pushes it to December. I think the plan would hold their meeting in December with you guys, the joint public. That's fine. We can make that work.
All right, that sounds good.
All right.
All right, perfect. Okay, so that means our next meeting is October twenty seventh at seven PM. Put it in your calendars. Awesome. And Jeff, we appreciate, I know you, I know you have a full plate, so it don't, don't, don't sweat about not having that for tonight. I think. That's not a problem, so. Yeah, no problem. And I think that we probably are safe to. Bid you a good evening unless there's anything else you you want to talk about straws with us.
I mean, I I will say I am a member of the Commission on Disability, but I think the route that you guys have been taking is fine, so I. I will bow out.
Okay, have a good evening.
All right, great. Thank you all very much.
Yep, and. So let me just see where we're at. Okay, so. Owen, you have some updated language, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, so a couple of things. So in the mean, in the interim with this. Intriguing discussion. I've I've a couple of things, a couple of conversations. One is I reached out to Somerville. Who has basically this policy and just kind of had a discussion with them about the process. And it was very similar to kind of what I've heard everywhere else that. You know, we adopted this policy because it was the most. It it was the the most of a reasonable compromise or between. Ecological stewardship and. Acknowledgement of the needs of of people with disabilities and. Kind of similar to what we saw in in New York City where. They sat down with their Commission on Disability, the Commission on Disability advised them that they thought that this was the best policy. And that was the policy they came up with. It's, their policy is pretty brief. It's like one line that says like. You know, straws shall not be given out except by request, period. And then I also kind of don't know why I didn't do this sooner, mostly because I just was kind of. Follow, taking kind of cues from them, but I reached out to Tandem because. They've had this policy for. I don't know, time doesn't mean anything to me. But I think they basically had this policy for probably at least two years, maybe longer. And I said, look, you know, we're talking about citywide policy that mirrors what you're doing. When someone asks for a drink. A straw is not dispensed with it unless someone asks for it. What have have there been any kind of pitfalls to this? Have you had issues? Do you have angry customers? Are there concerns? And essentially, they said, you know, that there haven't been any problems, you know, some of the. What ifs that were brought up at our last meeting. Were, haven't really been concerns, and as you all know, you know, so I could speak to just that business as an isolated business. I mean, you've all been there. Ordering food, you things can get pretty busy, and there hasn't been really an issue where. Someone's absolutely need to acquire a straw and like had to go back into the line and, you know. And been either just, you know, socially embarrassed or just haven't been able, that's been an inconvenience. So and and we talked about that, and then. And and then they do, you know, to Counselor Gomez's point, who was at our last meeting. They do automatically give them out with their. Their. Slush, uh, smoothies. To to speak to kind of like, well, are there certain drinks that like, it just kind of makes sense? And then the really intriguing thing, like, you know, really putting policy to power is. Or the opposite way around. They've reduced their straw use by fifty percent. And so that's huge, I think. You know, just to really quickly just go back, just, I'll say this in like four sentences. The initial question about this whole. Policy was, does this discriminate against people with disabilities? It doesn't. I mean, we have, there's, there's multiple, multiple bodies and and advocates and. Law reviews that I've consulted during this process that they don't. And, you know, one thing we didn't talk about, I think I sent one or both of you kind of information about this, too, is there's concern about disclosure. So. I guess I'll say first of all that that's not. There's not necessarily some, anything wrong with disclosure, and this comes from kind of both from. Aaron Vellali, you know, who I spoke with is the advocate, as well as the Mass Office of Disability, that. There's a lot of situations where you need to actually disclose disabilities. But also the way that this policy is written, just to, again, to go over that, it doesn't, it's a one-size-fits-all, it's universal. It's not, that's not an issue. So anyhow, I just want to put those things out there because. Those are kind of like the specters that were hanging over this from the start, how we kind of got here. So listening to everything that was brought up, particularly input from. Counselor Gomez, who was here last time, and Counselor Rothschild, who was asking about, you know, are there. Other ways to kind of allow people to select straws on their own without making, having to go up to a counter and ask for them. I put together this language, so let me share my screen.
And before, and and while you're sharing your screen, one of the other places, and this was. I don't know if you remember, but back in the the original. Iteration of this when we were meeting in person. So that was like years ago. The owner of Vercazana and the new, at that time, the new owner of the the boba tea or the. Oh, geez, what it's. Pokeball, where they were serving boba tea, and that was, if if I'm remembering correctly, because I know the Counselor Gomez had brought up. Like, what do you do for boba tea? And we said, well, if you can, you know, find an alternative. Then that's great, but if you can't, then you apply for the variance.
Yep.
At that time, it wasn't a variance, it was an exception, but we have that in place for that specific. Instance, which would allow them because of their, you know, the their business model and what they're serving, if there's no acceptable alternative, then they would. Be granted a variance to allow that. So I just wanted to, because that was another thing that was brought up, but, all right, so go ahead and and show us what you got here.
Okay, so a couple of things. So some of the language is the same. You'll see that there's the whatever's in red and crossed out, I removed. You know, we talked about the self-serve, single-use items. I just crossed that out. I mean, I. I think Counselor Rothschild asked if what that was about. We can take it or leave it, but I basically, do you want me to just read through it, Chairman? Would that be easiest?
Yeah, go ahead.
So. So section one, item one, basically stays the same. No retail food establishment shall dispense, distribute or sell a beverage straw in conjunction with the sale or service. Of prepared food, except upon request of an individual. Of an individual, all food establishments shall post a sign. A printed side reading, straws are available upon request in any areas. Where these single-use items are provided, as well as clearly displayed at the place where food is ordered. Side shall be developed in consultation with the Board of Health to maintain consistent eligibility and messaging across all businesses in the city. And then to respond to kind of the whole like. Well, like, what about like walk-up or takeout where you might not be able to ask, or it might just be more convenient to just have them somewhere where people can get them. This provision shall be satisfied by providing accessible dispensers containing single-use plastic straws and compostable straws. These dispensers shall be clearly visible and accessible to customers and be clearly marked. Compostable straws containing known allergens. To speak to that issue that was raised last time, although I couldn't really find much about that, so we could take that or leave it. Compostable straws containing known allergens must be marked to include a warrant to consumers. And the known allergen, or it should probably be as to the known allergen. Section two is the same. All food establishments shall maintain sufficient supply of single-use plastic beverage straws are not compostable, as well as sufficient supply of compostable straws. If a person specifically requests a plastic beverage straw, such food service establishment shall provide a single-use plastic beverage straw that is not compostable free of charge. And shall make no inquiry into the reason for such requests. Item three, again, the same. Nothing in this article prohibits retail food establishments and their employees from prompting patrons to request a straw as described as above. So you go to. Neenies and you order, you know, sodas or whatever, and the, so the. The serving person could say, would you like, you know, would you like a straw with that, or our policy is that you need to request a straw, would you like one? Nothing in this article prohibits customers using their own straws of any material for personal use in a business establishment. I mean, that. You could probably throw it away, but I think it's just important to just acknowledge that, that people do bring in their own utensils. And then. Item five kind of brings in the whole. Question or issue raised by Counselor Gomez. Exempt from this provision is the dispensing of straws for beverages where consumption with a thick wall durable straws required, such as shakes, fraps, smoothies, slushies. I could put in boba tea if you'd like, et cetera. And and that's really it.
So can you move back up to section one? And and thank, thanks for putting all that stuff in there, I think. That, you know, makes it a very, probably more com- comprehensive than most places, I would say. It's it's this, the section here after the, where everything is. Been struck, where it says all food establishments shall post a printed side. Reading straws are available upon request in any areas where these single-use items are provided. You probably. You probably can take that out and just say displayed where the food is ordered, or because you you struck the part where they were talking about those single use.
Yeah, so.
So we probably don't need that anymore.
Yeah, reading straws. I I could probably just strike, just strike that, just here.
Yeah.
Let me know if this works. Just leave it like that. Can you see that?
Yeah, so posted straws available on request, and then you could probably. We'd probably have to change as well as clearly, as well as, because then. So you would just say that it's clearly displayed at somewhere.
Clearly.
And clearly displayed. I think that that probably does it.
Cool.
Yeah. Uh, Tom, any thoughts?
No, this to me looks good. I have. Like. There's a part of me like when there's, when there's members of the, you know, like, the gentleman who showed up last time, when there's members of the community who. Who have concerns about this, I do want to hear from, like, just, there could be perspectives that I'm missing. From where I'm standing, this looks good, but just if it comes into a public hearing and there's other perspectives, I'll obviously have to consider them. But like. To me, this seems like it. It 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 sets things up in a way that. I I don't see this becoming an issue, and if it, in the case that. I I guess this is the big thing is, in the case that the sort of situation, the concerns that were being presented about people. Not being given plastic straws when they requested them or something came up, it does look like there's, there's pretty clear stuff in this ordinance about. That that's not okay, and we can have someone go talk to them and. You know, fix that. Just to me, I think that that's kind of important, like, I I would hate to have a situation where. People responded the way that. I'm blanking on the person's name, but the member of the Commission on Disability, yeah, yeah. The way that, if if people were actually responding the way that he was concerned they would. That would be a concern to me, but it does look like this pretty clearly states that you're not supposed to do that. And so, I'm. I'm okay moving forward on this. I just, like I said, this is a complicated issue that deals with. A lot of things that I have no personal experience in, so I will just want to keep hearing from. The folks that had their concerns around the the first draft, but everything in this looks fine to me.
That's great. My, and from my perspective, you know, so number one. We're at a critical point in our environment, like we we can't say idly by. Unless it's an extreme. Situation, because we're in an extreme environmental situation where our world is drowning in plastic. And so, like, for me. I need to make sure that I'm gonna do. My job to help mitigate some of the damage that plastics being done, and as the, you know. I think I was the only one that went to the sources to clean up at Millside Park, and one of, like, one of the only things I picked up was plastic straws. It was, it was really like disappointing, but also kind of affirming that we need to do something. And at at the end of the day, I feel like. This, you know, using, granted, from my perspective. That this seems to be minimally invasive to pretty much all populations, as everybody that wanted a straw. Would have to ask for one. And, you know, as far, as far as disclosure goes, I mean, if you. If you have, if you have a, one of those pa- parking tags on your car, and you get to park in, you know, a. A special parking space, i- isn't that disclosure, too, I guess? I I don't know. But.
No, you're sorry.
No, 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 it's fun, it's fun. But, you know, so for, at the end of the day, the last thing that makes me feel comfortable moving forward, this is the company that we're keeping, like this. Is similar to a policy that's been enacted in like major cities that have major populations, like New York City. And other, you know, West Coast big, you know, I think Denver has the same. Policy, at least it seemed like they did, because that was what the policy was when I was there. And and if if they can do it. And without having like major repercussions from and 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 in conjunction with their. Populations that they are, you know, really working closely with, I I feel like we can do it, too. So that's, those are the reasons why I feel like it makes sense to go forward. But go ahead, Tom, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just that. Sort of just to you, like, I I agree with everything you just said, and and yet I think the the one part of this. That sort of nags at me a little bit is the sense that I am in unfamiliar territory, that when it comes to the issues of disability rights. I, as a person who's never experienced any of this, have some blinders on, and so. When I look at this, I think, yeah, that makes complete sense. And I I hope that. We all come to that conclusion, or that we can figure out how to get there. I, my point is just that when I'm wading into this stuff, I'm wading into it knowing that. I, my perspective might keep me from noticing things from certain perspectives. And so that just. That would, if I'm, if I'm couching all my language, it's just to say, this looks good to me, but I do want to, like, when we get to public hearing, I am gonna want to hear. From people who have perspectives that aren't.
Yeah, and I I hear that, and I and I and I agree. And I think that we should do whatever we can, using, you know, good sense and and. And due diligence to to kind of move this forward. And at the end of the day, I also know that you're, you're always gonna be able to find somebody who's not happy with something. And, you know, and and so are we coming from a place of of. Um, and, you know, and, and so, are we coming from a place of, of being open, accepting, and thoughtful and diligent? And, and I, I'm hoping that we are. So, um, you know, well, I guess that will be, that will be borne out as we continue into this process. But, um, yeah, so, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine to move this forward i- if you feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything you guys just said. And I, so I'd say, you know, to certainly respond to Tom, too. I'm sorry, Counselor Peak, like, that's why I had a, an oh, poop moment. I'm not sure if I could say the other word here. And that's why I like did this deep, deep dive and talked to, you know, folks to, who deal with this, either just from purely just the kind of legal, mechanical, perspective, or like actual disability advocates. Um, and, and to, to Counselor Derby's point, like, I, I obviously think my colleagues are very smart, but like, all these other cities and states, you know, Vermont, Rhode Island, Oregon, California, you know, all these other municipalities have done this. And, they, they probably had a lot more legal resources and in, input from the disability community than we did. Um, interestingly, unless I misunderstood it, the, the person who came to our last meeting, I believe, was from, um, uh, Seattle, I was told. So I don't even know if they're, I mean, not that their opinion doesn't matter. I just wanted to kind of put that into perspective, which is interesting. So I think Seattle actually has a straw ban. Um, but I agree with you. I mean, we all approach this as people without disabilities. And so we're like, oh, this makes total sense, like, but like, I think, I think you're right, Counselor Peak, to make sure that we're being sensitive to, you know, the other populations are directly impacted by this. And I, I feel like the process we undertook does. Um, what's interesting, too, in speaking to some folks who, sorry, I'll, I'll be finished quickly. I just kinda wanna cover all sides of this. I talked to some Pete folks who basically run a business, like, to, for people with disabilities to be able to axe better access or have better access to like, um, you know, activities and such. And they, their feedback was, well, yes, of course you wanna have, um, policies that create accessibility, but, anyone with a disability where they require any sort of special aid to con- to consume food, they're gonna usually have it with them. It would be com- really odd for someone who, for instance, relied a hundred percent on a straw to consume fluids, to just not have, an aid with them. Not to say that it shouldn't be made available, but, but that would be kind of an unusual, um, an unusual situation, just to kind of put that out there as well. Um, so, uh, but yeah, so anyhow, that's, that's probably my five dollars. Uh, so, yeah.
Uh, Tom, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just that, um, I, 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 just to, just to make it clear where, where I'm sort of saying, like, I, I, I like this, but I kinda wanna hear, like, I, I also think that there's a very, like, there's a real possibility that there's like, you know, the ADA, for instance, the ADA is a law that was written by people, um, you, you know? And it was written by people, you know, in the early nineties. And like, I think there's a very real, when we're talking about, you know, the law and, and what, constitutes discrimination, what constitutes all of these things, there could be a possibility of a world, where something is fully legal, fully within the letter and spirit of the law, and yet, could potentially make life harder for certain people while not being, illegal or against, you know, one best practice or another, which is again, why I'm just saying, I, I do wanna hear from other people because, it could be that there's something that is fully okay, and, you know, legally completely fine, and everyone agrees with that. And yet, there's some real concern from certain circles about how it would affect them. And so, um, I just, like, again, I, I, uh, you know, I, I like this, I'm prepared to vote for it. I just, given the conversation we had last time, you know, i- i- if, if we move into public hearing and there is like, some strong pushback from folks who we either haven't heard from before, that they have some sort of point that we can't get. You know, my inclination will be to, to keep chatting about this until we can find some sort of, setup that actually, you know, meets the needs of the involved parties.
A hundred percent.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and I never heard from the person who came to the last meeting. I was hoping that, that I gave them, I passed along my email, I was hoping they would, give some input, but that didn't happen. Just full transparency.
Okay, okay. So, uh, let's get a motion to, to move this to the full council.
Uh, uh, so moved.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion to move this, uh, proposed, uh, straw, uh, piece of the plastic ordinance to the full council? Uh, Council Peak.
Hi.
And Council's Eric.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So I will bring this forward at our next meeting. Um, and we'll go from there. At least I'll let them know I have to set a public hearing for it. So, um, because it is a, an ordinance change. Um, so I'll, I'll be consulting with the president to find out when the best time for that public hearing will be. And then I'll bring it forward. Uh, yeah, Council's Eric.
Uh, just to report back to, so the Board of Health met about that variance language they had proposed. And they basically, um, approved it. The one recommendation, or, or that they made was there was some language in there, uh, that said manifest injustice. And, uh, Bree recommended that we just include a definition for manifest injustice, uh, injustice in the definitions for the ordinance, just so that was understandable. Um, and the definition she came up with was, uh, manifest injustice, injustice, a decision that is obviously unfair, shocking to the conscience, a decision that is direct, obvious, observable and plainly and obviously unjust.
Perfect. And are you gonna be able to add that? So we can?
Yeah, I'll, I'll write it all up, and I can put that forward, too. I can put both of these, it, give language for, um, when's the submission deadline? Thursday?
Thursday.
Yeah, I can, I can get that done.
Awesome. That's, that sounds good. And I don't know if you, um, if you guys noticed, but the, 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 the new business, um, did not make it onto our, uh, our agenda. So, I know that we're talking about splitting it between us and public safety, um, but it, it, it didn't make it on. So we'll just have to take that up at our next meeting. Does that sound fair?
Yes.
All right. You guys have anything else? Council's Eric.
I just wanted to thank you both for tolerating a completely mundane and inane topic. But I, I think that, who knew that talking about plastic straws would, you know, um, take on such a kind of like rabbit hole of, policy and research. And, um, now I'm, have connections to, uh, legislative aides in New York City and, uh, beyond. So, I mean, it was, it was good, but I, I appreciate you tolerating this whole process.
It was definitely a learning process, for sure. So, anyway, uh, all right, gentlemen. We're looking at a, a perfectly timed one-hour meeting, if you, if one of you wants to motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. And we will get out of here at exactly eight PM. So, Council's Eric.
Yes.
Counselor Peak.
Hi.
And I vote yes, too. Thanks for joining us. Have a great evening. We'll see you guys soon.
Take care.